Come to the December 2, 2013 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Simeon Timbuk from Bezda Romanian Pedicoastal Church with us this evening to give the invocation. If you would please stand and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, good evening.
Good evening. Our Heavenly Father, we come before you in this season of Thanksgiving and holiday. I thank you for your love, for your kindness, for your protection given to us. And that's to bless this council meeting, to bless the councilmen, the councilwoman, and to bless the leadership of the city of Troy, to bless everyone of us. In Jesus' name I pray, and I thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, unlike a god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. The City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hutterick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. And C1 is the 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report presented by Tom Dowling, my Financial Services Director. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me join you this evening to go over the 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, along with the chance to celebrate with you on a couple of recognitions that the city has received in its financial reporting, if I may. The first thing I'd like to do is talk about the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And if I may, have Lisa Burnham, Anita Halprin, Renee Hassan, and Lori Ferg join me up here for these. We've received so many of these, they're starting to get... I think this time they just gave us one, and they'll give us little duckets next time, because this is our 16th consecutive year of receiving this prestigious award. This award for the 2012 Comprehensive Financial Report is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel from a membership across the nation to make sure that it meets the highest standards of the program, including demonstrating the constructive spirit of full disclosure, transparency, and the ability to clearly communicate the financial story and motivate potential users and user groups in reading the CAFER. There are around 1,775 cities in Michigan which only, that I know of, six have received this award and the next award that I'm going to bring up. So you're well in the 99.6 percentile of receiving both of these awards. So again, I'd like to present this to the finance staff. Before I continue, I'd like to talk about the award for achievement of the Popular Annual Financial Reporting. And if I could, Cindy Stewart, if you could join me up here, as if she doesn't have enough awards already on her wall, but this is one I gotta think is probably her favorite.
Again...
Tom, could you use the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, she's won so many of these. This is, I believe, her 14th consecutive award, that they had to basically make a monument for it, so that we can just add to it. They were running out of wood of, if you can remember the old ones. So there you go, Cindy. The award for Outstanding Achievement Popular Annual Financial Reporting is a prestigious national award for the performance of the highest standards for preparation of state and local government popular reports. In order to receive the award of outstanding achievement, the government unit must publish a Popular Annual Financial Report, or the PAFER, whose contents conform to program standards of creativity, presentation, understandability, and reader appeal. The governmental unit must also receive the CAFER in order to apply for the PAFER presentation. So I wish you would all join me in congratulating your team here of financial and communication experts in receiving, again, these awards. And again, to thank council for their support in this program.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of you. Thank you.
Okay, so now to some interesting things about the 2013 CAFER report. Again, I've given you a presentation. You have all the slides, but I've kinda dwindled it down a little bit to highlight some specific points that I'd like to go over for this evening. If we can, if I can, let's try that button. Ah, there we go. Just real quick, I want to go over what's in the Table of Contents, and what is in the CAFER. First of all, you know, it's a 156-page document, so basically anything you want to know is going to be in there somewhere. It's really contained, divided into four sections, and on page one is the introductory section. And really, you know, I would suggest reading this section. It acts like an executive summary. It talks about the organization, recent economic developments, financial results at the fund level, and it's really good for just either a quick review or overview, or service really of a basis if you want to get deeper into the details. The second part, the financial section, which starts on page 15, it's really kind of the meat and potatoes of it. And in there, you really have about seven sections. But most notably, you'll have your governmental-wide financial statements, fund financial statements, notes to the financial statements, will give you more clarity on different amounts that you see in those statements, and some combining statements for some of our smaller, non-major fund types. The third section is the statistical section, which talks on page 19, starts on page 19, and I'll talk about that a little later in the presentation. But again, it's a great section to get tenure trend information and vital statistics of the city. Finally, the single audit section, because we participate in federal awards, and as we all know, there are strings attached to all awards, right? Our auditors do special audit procedures to make sure, A, we're pulling all the right strings, and all the strings that we should be pulling. So that's what's in the single audit section, and that starts on page 47. Okay, so next, let's talk about the financial section. And a good financial section always starts with an audit report to make sure that what you are reading is, A, all there in scope, compliant with governmental accounting standards, GAS, GAGUS, which are governmental accounting standards, general accepted accounting principles, GAAP, and a few other acronyms that I'm sure our independent auditor will talk to you about. If you may, if I could introduce Gerald Dislover, CPA CGFM. He is the principal in charge of your audit at the firm of the Raymond Group, or Raymond Robson. Not only did he service the principal on your auditor, but he also oversees the whole governmental practice at Raymond Group. And if you're familiar with Raymond Group, they are one of the largest governmental independent auditors in the state of Michigan.
Thank you. Evening.
Thank you, Tom. Mayor, City Council, I'd like to take just a few minutes to go through our opinions that are in this financial statement and answer any questions with respect to those or anything within this report. As Tom explained, we are the independent auditors. We come in and go through the transactions on a test basis and look for material adjustments or comments that we need to make. So based on that, we enter an opinion on the financial statements themselves on page And without reading this word for word, it's an unmodified opinion. It's a little bit different terminology than in the past, which means it's not modified for any exceptions. The audit was done, as Tom explained, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards. So this is the type of opinion that you want. It's the highest level of assurance that we can provide the city, no exceptions. And then, in addition to that opinion, we are required to do what's called a single audit and look at all your federal dollars. You received $5 million this year in federal financial assistance, so we're required to audit the major programs on page 150. There are two opinions that we have to render, one at the financial statement level for compliance at the local and state level, and internal control at that level. And that's the opinions on page 150. The key here is, there's a paragraph saying there are no exceptions, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies at both those levels. If there had been, they would be explained in this report. The second one is the opinion at the federal level. Again, because you received that much federal money, you're required to have a special single audit for compliance with the federal regulations. And we're required to look at compliance over that program and at internal control as well. And again, there were no exceptions, no findings, no material weaknesses, and most important, no question cost. Excellent report card. No matters to report, basically. That's good. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, so now that we have assurance that what is in the CAFER is complete and has passed all the standards, let's go through just a few of the highlights, if we can. Okay, so the first part that starts on page 29 are your governmental-wide financial statements. And just real briefly, they're on a different basis of accounting than they are your fund financial statements. Basically, what they're saying, if we were a business, what would we look like financially? Again, it takes the city as a whole. It uses a full accrual basis of accounting, and again, the focus is on the economic condition, not spendable resources. Again, at the end of this, you'll see it's net position, and net position, again, is an economic indicator and not a spendable resource indicator. Okay, so let's go on to, then on page 29, if we can, on the, as you can see, the third column over on the bottom, you'll see an amount there of 420.7 million. On the bottom of page 29, again, third column over, and that is the net position of the city as a whole. That's both your governmental, your business-type entities combined together. Now, it should be noted that this basically represents the amount you have, less what you owe. Makes sense, doesn't it? So again, the focus is on economic resources and not necessarily spendable resources. So let's break this 420 million down just a little bit. As you can see, the largest part, 297.9 million of that, is invested in capital assets. This is a sign, as you can see, we have a trend that goes up, and this is a sign of good health. It means that we're taking our resources and we're putting them back into the infrastructure instead of letting them necessarily deteriorate, 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 that you may see. Again, you would expect the trend of this to go up as you go through time, because the cost of replacing these assets, water mains and sewer lines, the cost is more expensive today than it was yesterday. So as we buy those and invest in those, really, for future use, you would naturally expect to see those trends go up. Okay? So again, a good sign that we're heading in the right direction. Next, just real quick, the governmental activities program revenues versus the actual expenditures. Again, this is on the governmental-wide basis of accounting, and just as a quick reference, this is page 30. And if you see, the very last column in page 30 says, what is the net expense? So we have several different programs out there, and some of those programs generate their revenues. We have charges for services, we have different grants that we get. The idea that this is supposed to show you is, what do our tax dollars go for? In other words, you know, based on the programs we have, where do we fall short of that program generating its own revenue to be sustainable? So the idea behind here is, again, to kind of show you how your tax dollars are used. Again, you can see the number-one thing is in the area of public safety. It shouldn't be noted, in public works, typically, we don't have $12 million of revenues in a public works area. Actually, about four and a half million of that is from a transit center grant that we'd received. So there's usually a bigger variation than that. Okay? All right, next, let's go on to the fund financial statements. And fund financial statements, basically, are going to start on page 32. Again, this focuses on the near-term financial inflows and outflows. It uses a modified accrual base of accounting, so therefore, really, it's the basis that we use for budgeting and really financial management's decisions. And when we talk about fund balance, we're talking at this level, at the fund level. So let's talk real briefly about the general fund. Again, this is general fund revenues, budget versus actual. As you can see, we do a pretty good job of budgeting our revenues and coming in close to what those budgeted amounts are. I think, again, we've done a good job. You can see 2009 through 2011, though, we were a little bit under budget as we went through the beginning of the recession. Next, let's talk about our revenue by sources very quickly. As you can see, taxes comprise 59% of our tax revenue, charges for services about 15%, and our intergovernmental revenues, which is basically our state grants and our state shared revenue, is about 13%. So if we total that up, that's about 87% of our revenue based on, in those three categories. So we'll kind of break those down a little bit. As you can see, again, from a history standpoint, we've had a decline in tax revenues over since 2008. We have about 29.6 million in revenues for 2013. You can see the high was in 2008, and we are basically at our low point right now. We expect that to be steady as we go forward. Charges for services, which is basically the yellow, and there's pretty consistent around seven and a half million dollars in our governmental revenues, which is primarily your state shared revenue. It's been around the six and a half mark lately, but as you can see, it's really fallen down about $1 million from its high in 2010 at about seven and a half millions. So it went from about seven and a half million to about 6.6 million for this year. Okay? Let's talk about general fund expenditures real quick. Again, you know, we do a good job of staying under what City Council has given us for our budget in our expenditure lines. As you can see, we had, at the end of this year, we had about $46.6 million of expenditures in the general fund, and we've stayed well below that. You can see our high was around 65.5 million in 2007. Again, we've done a good job of staying with inside our allocations. Let's talk about, real briefly, what makes up general fund expenditures. Public safety is 58.8% of that. Your general government, 16% of that, and parks and rec are about 13% of that. Again, this is just accounting for the expenditure side. Like, our parks and rec fund pretty much a lot of that. They're south through their charges of services. This is just strictly the expenditures. Of that, then, our total expenditures in those three categories are about 87% of the city's expenditures. Turning back to page 32, just real quick, we've seen this line several times, our revenues compared to our expenditures during the recession of 2008, we're starting really from 2011. And where we are for 2013, should be noted, at the end of 2013, we had a total fund balance of 36.8 million. Of that, 24.9 million was unassigned. I do give a look at what we have budgeted for '14 and '15 and '16. As you can see, we are budgeting to use a little bit of fund balance through the next three years, but trying to keep it around that $20 million level for unassigned. Capital projects fund. Okay, so let's change funds. Now, we're still going to start off on page 33, excuse me, page 34. You have revenues and other sources of around 14.9 million, and expenditures of around 14.3 million for the capital projects fund. One thing we should probably note on here is that we've had several years, by looking at this, that you've used fund balance, right? My expenditures are higher than my revenues. So the high point of the capital project fund at one point was around 24 million. I'll show you on the next slide how we've been using it. So it's something that we need to be conscious of in the future of what we've done with that. But before I get to that slide, real quick, the expenditures, how we break them out. You got 45% that are going to streets, 31% into buildings. 31% is a little high for buildings, but that's because we had the transit center in this year. But again, that's, you know, that's 76% of your, of our expenditures in the capital project fund go to streets and buildings, infrastructure. Okay? As I mentioned, let's talk about fund balance then, real quick. And fund balance for the capital project fund can be seen on the second column on page 32. Again, in 2009, we had about 22.3 million. At the end of '13, we have about 12 million in fund balance. I think the high at one point, we had around 24 million in this fund in 2008. Again, you know, we use the capital project fund to maintain our infrastructure, primarily roads and things of those nature. Okay? Let's talk real quick about enterprise funds. Let's talk about the water fund. We had, and this can be seen on page 39. We had revenues of 16 million and expenditures of 14.4 million, which then increased your net position then by about 1.9 million. But again, that increase in that position isn't necessarily spendable, because this is a full accrual basis. What did we do with that 1.9 million? Well, as you can see, 1.3 million of it, we invested in infrastructure. So yes, our net position went up, but partly because we're investing back into our system the way that we should. Talk a little bit about the sewer system. It's still on the same page, next column over. The sewer system had about $13 million in revenue, about $12.2 million of expenditures for the year. And again, how did we use that? Again, 34.8 million is invested in capital assets of the total net position of 66 million, and even about 31.3 million for resources to invest in future years. Again, these are both, you know, signs of good health in the system, especially the water system. The sewer system came down a little bit in capital assets, but again, we're maintaining a high level of investment in our infrastructure. Okay, let's talk, lastly, then, about your last major enterprise fund, which is the Sanctuary Lake Golf Course. You had about 1.3 million in revenues, operating revenues, and 1.26 million in operating expenditures for the year. Again, it came down a little bit from 2012. 2012, we had an exceptional year as far as weather. Golf courses are very dependent upon weather and playability. Again, with that being said, we're certainly up above where we were in the 2009 through 2011 years. So when it comes to net position, and actually, the Sanctuary Lake has a net deficit of about $5.3 million. In other words, if you took the value of its assets and its liquid resources, it'd have a deficit of about 5.3 million. But what have we done to try and decrease that? The thing that happens with Sanctuary Lake, it has operating revenues, but then it has to pay for the debt, and that's where it's had some struggles. But as you can see from this graph, we're making some headway in that. Where from 2000 to 2009 to 2011, you actually had a loss from operations before we even started to pay off the non-operating expenses. But you can see from 2012 to 2013, that we are starting to get operating income to help put a dent and pay for, basically, the debt service for this fund. So the question is, is, okay, well, how are we covering the shortfall? And the shortfall is basically receivables from Sylvan Glenn. Again, we kind of look at golf course operations as a whole when it comes to liquidity issues. Finally, I'm going to end up with our trust funds. I know we spent a couple hours, a week or two ago, talking in depth about our trust and agency funds, so I just want to put one slide up there to talk about our funding ratio. Again, our employee retirement system's 96.4% funded. Our retired healthcare system is 59.2% funded, which are well above the average out there for local municipalities. And then, our volunteer fire incentive program, which is about 45.6% funded. Again, the statistical section's in the back. It has a lot of financial trend information, revenue capacity, debt capacity, and continuing disclosures. It's a good section to go through to see what's in there. It's a lot of information. Finally, again, we are going to submit our 2013 CAFER for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and hopefully, it fares as well as it did for 2012.
Questions? Questions for Mr. Darling?
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. There are no carryover items or public hearings scheduled this evening, so our next order of business is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents' businesses. I do not see anyone signed up this evening to speak in this section. So we will move to postponed items. There are no postponed items, and we are quickly into regular business. Boards and committee appointments. Mayoral appointments, A, is first, so I will move the resolution to appoint Councilwoman Hutterick to the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, for the term that expires
Support?
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Fleming, that we appoint Councilwoman Hutterick to the LDFA for the term that expires 11/13/2007. Is there a discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutterick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the appointment. I'm looking at this on the computer, and it... I am going to move the appointment of Donald Edmonds, Steve Gottlieb, and Thomas Crent to the Planning Commission for the terms that expire 12/31/2016.
Second.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we appoint Donald Edmonds, Steve Gottlieb, Thomas Crent to the Planning Commission for the terms that expire 12/31/2016. Discussion? Councilman Fleming?
Yes. I see Mr. Gottlieb sitting in the audience here, and I think I recommended you put your name in for some committees and so forth, after you ran for City Council and did quite well. I do want to point out, at the last meeting, we discussed Ed Kempin not being reappointed here because he had not, one reason that he had not submitted his application. I talked to Mr. Kempin and learned that he had relocated, and the application apparently was sent to his previous address. He was about a month late getting it. He did respond, I think, and I saw the application today, where he is interested in being reappointed. That's the mayor's decision protocol as to who he nominates. But he did wish to be reappointed. Also, I pointed out in his application that he's just finished the citizens planner, of course, with the Michigan State University. In the past year that he's been on the Planning Commission, he has gone out and gotten additional education and desires to be reappointed.
Thank you. I understand that position, and as I indicated last week, whether he had put I understand that, that position, and as I indicated last week, whether he had put in his application or not, it was my intent to appoint Steve Gottlieb, who ran for council. And I think it's, from my position, appropriate to nominate him for that position without going into further detail. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutterick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations to all three, especially Mr. Gottlieb, who is in the audience this evening, who is willing and able to serve in some capacity, and thank you for doing that. Thank you, Steve. Next order of business is B, city council appointments, and I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Protem Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to resolve that Detroit City Council hereby appoint the following nominated persons to serve the boards and committees as indicated. The Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees, Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust, William Need.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson and supported by Councilman Fleming, that we appoint William Need to the Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees/Retirement Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust for the term that expires 12/31/2016. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutterick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is the Southeastern Michigan Council of Government, SEMCOG. Appointees, James Campbell and Mark Miller.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we appoint Councilman Campbell and Mr. Miller to the SEMCOG positions for the terms that expire Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutterick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
And lastly, resolved that Detroit City Council hereby forwards the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated to the next regular city council meeting for action. Liquor Advisory Committee, this is a vacancy created from Matthew Bencowski, who has resigned, and I would like to forward the name David Easterbrook, whose application is on file as of late this afternoon.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we appoint... Did you say he's on file? David Easterbrook for the position of, on the Liquor Advisory Committee for the term that expires 1/31/2015. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Hutterick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I three is a closed session request. There is none this evening. I four, we will take no action on this evening and pass on that item. I five is the termination of required furlough hours with an introduction by City Manager Brian Kishnik.
Yes, Mayor. This was asked to be put on the agenda at the last study session, so we've prepared the memo based on conversations with staff, and this would be to reduce time off, required time off without pay, so that we would have 40 hours pay, equalling 40 hours worked. This is the remaining furlough time and concessionary time.
Thank you. There was a memorandum that was distributed to council in the packet this evening, so I will move the resolution, resolve that Detroit City Council hereby terminates furlough hours required of the city employees effective January 1st, 2014, as I was the one that asked to have this on the agenda this evening. Moved by the Chair and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we terminate the furlough hours required of city employees effective January 1st, 2014. Discussion, Councilman, which one went first? Councilman Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to elaborate a little bit on this, for those watching and listening, we agreed during our budget session that we would give back one-half of the furlough days, as I'm correct, as I recall. So, we gave back one-half the furlough days. I was under the impression that we had also budgeted to give back additional furlough hours in 2015 and 16, but upon further discussions prior to the meeting with Mr. Darling, our Financial Services Director, he indicated that we discussed that we really never budgeted giving these back at all. Am I, is that correct understanding, Mr. Darling? May I ask that?
Mr. Darling?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as far as the budget for 2015 and 2016, it's under the, the premise of the furlough hours that we, one-half of the furlough hours that were given back for the 2014 budget continued on. So, one-half, and sure, one-half of the furlough hours are in the 15 and 16 budget.
That was my understanding, correct?
Is anybody else's comments now? Might have others.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
I'm not sure that cleared that, that question in my mind. So, we, we budgeted, the last budget session, we gave back half of the furlough hours. But we never made a decision as to whether that was going forward, or we were going to consider that in the next budget session, or did we make that decision at that time?
Right. The one-half, the one-half furlough hours were budgeted for 14, 15, and 16. So, they are in the, one-half of those furlough hours are in the 14, 15, and 16 budget. The other half, which you're talking about this evening, are not.
Okay. Mayor Protem Henderson?
One, one follow-up, and I wonder if we could ask City Manager if he could explain to us how giving back the remainder of the furlough hours would affect productivity and the discussions that we've had about that particular item.
City Manager Kishnik?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this. In terms of establishing the list of 12 strategies, where we're talking about employee morale, recruitment, and retention, and certainly, when I walk the city hall as recently as this morning, people were, people did ask me, they, they said they really hope that the furlough hours would, would be eliminated tonight. And certainly, we said that we recommend that because it's, it's, it's certainly been a few years now since the furlough hours have been into effect, and it's, it's becoming a recruitment barrier for some departments. I know the police chief and I have had these conversations, and it certainly is a productivity opportunity for us without adding bodies and fully loaded employee costs when we can get more hours out of employees and pay them for those hours while they, they're doing the, the increased workload of, of the city. So, in a nutshell and in summary, that's the case. We did not budget the other half of the elimination of the furlough, as Mr. Darling discussed. However, we did discuss it at length in all the budget discussions in the departmental, remember, we started with departmental discussions on how furlough was one of those barriers to, A, productivity, B, morale, and C, you know, recognizing the concessions that were made in the past during tough times and utilizing, taking the opportunity today to recognize the employees by giving extra hours worked and then pay for those hours.
Did you, Councilman Teetz?
Go ahead.
You want me to go first? The reason that I brought this up at this, this point was, I was waiting to, till we had a study session to discuss fund balance. And once we had those discussions and it was presented publicly where we stand, where we're going, I thought it was time to take a look at doing away with furlough days for many of the same reasons that City Manager Kishnik brought forward, but more importantly, I think it's important to decide why, what is the purpose of take, giving concessions and asking for concessions? And the purpose for doing that is to get you through what you determine are going to be some pretty tough times. And the private sector does this more than, more than we do. They ask their employees at many parts of the year or whenever to, to take concessions, and generally, they get those concessions back when profits start to increase. Government is a little different. We, we don't do things for profit, but as you could see with the study session that we had last week, we are in a position now where, because of concessions and because of certain things that we did back in 2009, we are in a position now, in my opinion, that we should do away with the concessions. And there may come a day when this council has to go back to the employees and ask again for concessions. I hope that doesn't happen. But if it does, I think it's important for them to know that if they give concessions, we will return those concessions when it's appropriate and not have to wait until a budget comes up. And I think the time is, is now, and that's why I moved this forward. Councilman Fleming?
No.
Oh, Councilman Teetz?
I'll wait till later. What question I have, I didn't... Where, where will the money come from, I guess, is the question? If it's not in the budget, what, what changes, or is this going to be amending the budget to include this? I'm looking for some direction.
We will provide a budget amendment to take this, the cost of this into consideration. And that's something we do quarterly anyway, with, with Mr. Darling and I and the staff sit down and look at the budget, see where we're short, see where we're over, and continually adjust the budget. And if there is some fund balance use, that, that would, that would be presented, or if there's not, if we're able to fit it within the budget, which historically, looking at that, it, it appears that that would be the case.
Yes, Mayor. Just to be clear, there was a half a million dollars that we actually added back in the budget, which was for half the furlough days. What we're talking about now is an additional $500,000 approximately to add to the budget now to eliminate the furlough days in its entirety. So, it's a $1 million back to the employees over and above what they were paid the previous, previous year. There were a number of items on that list, and I have very little doubt that these furlough hours terminating this is going to pass tonight and early Christmas present for the employees. I feel that will happen, but there were a number of items on that list. This is one that was chosen quite quickly, and I understand the reason for that. My concern is, the remaining items on there, I think we really need to do our due diligence, looking at all of those before we make a quick decision on anything else on that list, because I think the list needs some work. I think there's some items that need to be added to the list before we consider spending any more. And what I would propose, whether this passes tonight or not, but I believe it will, that this council not make any other decisions until we have a full report and opportunity to get feedback from Standard and Poor's as to how these actions are going to affect our AAA bond rating. I know that's probably going to happen sometime in the new year. But my concern is, is like the, the mayor, if we give this back tonight, we may have to come back and ask for it again. We hope not, but our national economy is not in really good shape. It's, it's pretty, pretty bad and pretty bleak. No one likes to think about a double-dip recession, but it could happen. And I'm just a little hesitant to start spending all the money that we've worked really hard, the council and the staff and administration, all the employees have given, to get us in the position we're in now. We also had a tax increase for, for the library, the mill, so there was a tax increase. That's part of the reason we've got some of this, this excess, and I don't want to debate that, but that's just a fact in, in my mind that helped contribute to it. But if this does pass, I'm just asking this council to really please, let's not take any further action on the other items on the list until we've had a thorough review or report from Standard and Poor's to talk about AAA bond rating before we do anything else to spend this additional fund balance that we have.
I agree with, I agree with that. Councilman Hutterick?
Mayor, I agree.
Councilwoman Hutterick, I'm sorry.
I, I agree with, with what you're saying. I think we do have, I think it's important to understand that this is, to say this is a lean, mean municipal machine is an understatement. The staff cuts here and the work that the staff does here to deliver full-service, high-quality services to our residents is, it's not well-understood by our residents what they pull off. And it is time to give back to our employees because we, we can at this point. And secondly, it's an attraction, in terms of attracting talent to this municipality, it's critical. It makes us competitive. We need the city of Troy to be a go-to place for highly talented, educated, experienced municipal employees, and we want to be the place that they want to go to. And that used to be the case. It was a given. It's not all the time now. So, there's an opportunity cost that comes with our ability to attract that talent, and I think the elimination of the furlough days will put us back in a position, reputationally, for attracting really high-quality employees, and we need them more than ever because we are so lean here. And, and that's why I think this is a great, in the timing is critical to attract those employees now. We're not looking to do that two years from now. We have a desperate need to do that now, and this would help us do that.
Councilman Pennington?
It comes down to what we talked about in the budget sessions many times. What type of city do we want to be? Well, we want to be the type of city that takes care of its employees. Employees gave back, and it's, it's a good, a good time for us to give back to them.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yeah, I tossed this around a lot of different ways over the weekend to try to figure out where I stood on the, on the idea of furlough days. And, you know, I, I like the idea of keeping it under the, the budget umbrella because that's where we do all of our, our hard work into thinking about, you know, where we want to spend resources. But by the same token, you know, I've worked for companies where, you know, Black Friday, they come in and, you know, everybody gets a 25% cut today, and like it or, or don't, that's what you're, you're dealt with. And I can, I can just imagine had the, had they made those cuts and the CEO had a report that stated, you know, we've just gotten a surprise X amount of earnings this year, and then chose not to do the right thing and to return the staff to, to normal or right or, or regular, you know, what, what that would have or could have done to morale. So, again, I, I struggle with the budget issue, and, and yet, I understand the appearance of, you know, a surplus now in the general fund balance and, and what that can do to, to employee morale. So, I, I'm leaning towards voting yes on returning the, or eliminating furlough days. But again, I, I think we do need to look at the budget study session and, and really give some strong consideration to every aspect of how we spend that surplus, or do we spend it and how far do we spend it down? We should, we really need to take that seriously, and I think we all do.
Any, any other discussion? Very good points. Could we have the vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutterick?
Yes.
Motion passes. City Manager Kishnik, I hope you'll work on that and get that done. Thank you. Next is consent agenda. Is there anyone at council table that wishes to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Would somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Fleming?
Resolved that Detroit City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutterick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington? Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
All consent agendas were approved tonight. If you are here on one of those items, they were approved this evening. Next is memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none submitted. So next we will do public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And Richard Peters, Troy resident, would like to speak this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council, folks in Troy. I just want to say I was driving through the city here the other day and it seemed like the city looks like it's starting to bounce back. And I think I want to congratulate the council and folks here for, you know, the good spirit and good fight. My main thing here is for the Detroit Institute of Arts tonight. There's a judge tomorrow who's going to rule on the Detroit bankruptcy, but I'm a bit concerned about that because I'm, you know, there's like Picasso, Rembrandt, all these people, and it's always easy to go after the arts whenever something's bad. And I really think that this is, they should think that over because I think that's a mistake. I mean, that's, to me, it's like wiping out the past, the present, and even the future. There's probably ideas there that nobody's even grasped yet that have been there. So I would definitely hope, I'm not saying this is Nazism or Talibanism or some extreme ideology like that, but I know that people are hurting down there. But to make an ad hoc decision like this, I just hope that the judge would use some prudence and wisdom on this and maybe wait and put off for a month or so before they make a decision on that. And also the city, I wonder if they consider putting the solar energy back somehow, at least they try to, you know, and I don't know how I'd say this, but how to step by step maybe or something if you could, but that's up to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak this evening on public items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Next is council referrals. There are none this evening, so that takes us to council comments. If I could, I'll start this evening and just bring forward in light of what happened in our joint meeting with the planning commission, I think it's important that we take a look at the ordinance and ask the city attorney to do some research and bring back for this council as soon as possible how we work in conjunction with the planning commission to try and resolve the issue that became evident at least the planning commission and the joint meeting that we had regarding the issue at Square Lake and Adams with the assisted living facility. I think, and I certainly don't know if I speak for this entire council, but if there is consensus here, I would like to see some movement to change the ordinance and kind of tweak, tweak it so that the planning commission has some more teeth into the ordinance and have an ability to look at it from an intent, what the intent of the ordinance was really all about. And if I, anybody on council wishes to speak on that tonight also, to see if there is consensus to ask the city attorney to do that. Councilman Teetz?
Yep. The one thing I would put on as addition to that is the timeliness factor. I know that the planning commission is meeting soon and during the last joint meeting, they asked for guidance from the city council. And hopefully we can emphasize timeliness and speed with their decision-making process. And hopefully we can convey that both with what we're saying right now, but also in whatever the staff is able to prepare for them. Because my goal that, you know, by the new year, we would be able to review something and have some decisions made. Seeing that they have a meeting coming up and I think it was a question of, a lot of folks didn't know what the zoning rules were, and I think this would be a great thing to review, so I believe it at that.
And if, just to piggyback on that, if I could, I know if we're going to change the ordinance, we have to go through public hearings and we have to, it's not simple. And I think this council wants to look to maybe something that could be more immediate. And if we could look at special use regarding this issue, I think that is something that we could do in a more immediate fashion. And if the city attorney could think of some other, some other things that council could pass along to the planning commission would be appreciated. Councilman Campbell?
Are you suggesting that we, this body changes, goes about to change the zoning laws where that property is? Is that what you're suggesting? Are you suggesting that we somehow have more, not oversight, but involvement in some of these questionable areas where it's?
I think we're, at least I'm proposing two things. You know, when we passed the zoning ordinance recently, we knew that there were going to be issues. We knew that we were going to have to tweak the zoning ordinance. So I think that this is one of the areas that we need to tweak. And in order to do that, I think we need the city attorney to correspond with us and let us know what's available out there, what we can do and have some input on these type of facilities and where they can go. I know the planning commission, I talked to Chairman Tagle, and they're looking, on their next agenda, they're looking at restrictions that they would like to see for these type of facilities. And I think it's just important to make it clear to the planning commission. And we talked about communication from city council. They're looking at that from us. So I'd like to see what the city attorney can bring back to us regarding tweaking this ordinance to bring it more in line with what's on the agenda for the planning commission at their next meeting. And maybe if I could ask the attorney Bloom if she's clear on what we're talking about here to the...
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to wait until everybody had a chance to give their input.
How about, I'll call on Councilman Fleming and then...
Thank you.
Some of this might get cleared up.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. The planning commission is doing a great job with the tools they're given, the zoning ordinance. They just, you know, make sure that it's applied correctly. But I think it goes beyond, certainly the senior living is one that popped out to us right now. But there are other issues too with that zoning ordinance. One that comes to mind is the huge building on Rochester Road just south of Waddles on the east side of Rochester Road. That's the public storage that's going in there. Planning commission had no choice but to approve that, but the height is such that it's casting a huge shadow on the residents. And they had no choice but to approve it. But I think we need to really look at this and get direction, you know, from staff, from the planning commission, not only just the senior assistant, but maybe some other issues as well. I know, Mayor, you had mentioned that and had some concerns about that huge, I think it was a five-story building growing up there. And I think when we passed this zoning, new zoning ordinance, I think that just slipped by me. I didn't read the fine print and realized that you could put a five-story building on Rochester Road backing up the residents. And as Councilman Teetz said at the last meeting, none of these residents could have anticipated that. It's not something you would expect. So I think we need to look at not only the senior assistant living, but maybe there are some other things that have come to light through the planning commission recently. We should look at changing this ordinance and how they interface with the council because really they're looking to us for direction. That's what we're trying to do, Mayor. But I don't want to limit it just to the senior assistant living. That's one thing, it's immediate. But I don't want to see another five-story building growing up on Rochester Road backing up the residents either. So that's another one that comes to mind that we need to address.
Agree.
I think.
I agree. I think we talked about that in the combined study session, and that's certainly something I think that we want to look at. But I think the concern, at least at this table from what I hear, is these issues that get grandfathered, like, you know, we discussed changing an ordinance for the assisted living and we're told by the attorney that, well, we can change the ordinance, but it won't have any effect on this particular one who has brought this forward already. So I feel that there's a need to address this, especially when I hear that the way the ordinance is today, they could put one of these facilities in the middle of a subdivision. And I think we need to move quickly on those type of issues. And I think the special use would be a way to immediately deal with that issue and then try to resolve some of these issues, other issues that the planning commission, I think, intends to bring up at their meeting as far as main road entrance and some of the other issues that they're looking at. So that's kind of where I was coming from. So city attorney Bloom, does that make sense to you?
It does, but I do need some clarification. First of all, I would just indicate that it won't just be me, it'll certainly be city administration because obviously we have planning experts and, you know, so I just wanted to make that clarification. It has to be done, all of us working together. Secondly, you do have a planning commission and they are going to be entertaining this initially on their meeting of the 10th. So that's coming up very quickly. Mayor, as you've correctly pointed out, if you're going to do any text amendments, which if you're going to add things like special, changing it from, you know, to a special use or limiting it to major roads or, you know, dealing with setbacks, anything like that, that would be potentially a text amendment. And so you do have some public hearing requirements. So I know that Councilman Teetz had indicated he wanted it before the end of the year. With those public hearing requirements and the advance notice and the publication, I'm not sure that that is feasible. So I just, I want to make sure that that's clear. Also, I want to make sure it's clear that it won't impact anything that has already been approved. So I know I've said that before, but I think it just bears repeating that if you do make changes, then it's prospective only. It does not, is not retroactive. After having said that, however, I will give you a memo with some options that you may have, you know, in the interim. And I know that the planning commission is going to be moving forward with this with a lot of expediency as well.
Because we are having this discussion this evening, would that be positive to try and prevent this from happening within the next month if somebody decided that they were going to rush in here and try to either expand the facility that is going on at Square Lake and Adams or try to do something with an assisted living to try and beat a change to this ordinance? Would we have some teeth at this point because we are discussing changing that ordinance?
What I'd like to do is give you a memo for your next meeting to maybe give you some options that you might have, you know, to try and prevent persons from coming in under the wire, trying to come in under the wire.
Councilman Teetz?
Yep, that's my concern as well. And so maybe before the new year is a little brash, but sooner rather than later and figuring out what those steps would be. That's the important thing.
Yeah, and if you need to give us some confidential correspondence to expedite that, I think all members up here would be more than willing to deal with that between now and the end of the year if need be. Any other council comments this evening? Any discussion on the reports that were in the agenda packet this evening? Councilman Teetz?
I apologize.
Want to go back?
Maybe go back to council comments. One thing for, from the planning city council meeting, someone grabbed my elbow after the meeting and said to me that, well, how come my homeowner association didn't know about this? And they had some concerns that, you know, the homeowner association is supposed to know everything or at least have more information than maybe the average citizen. That said, I know in the past, there's been an association of homeowner associations or communication in, from the city to those groups. And I was hoping that that's something we could restart, renew, or simply just have the city reaching out to them and communicating with them directly. And that way, the city can provide them with information from the different departments and so forth that are relevant to solving, you know, applicable real problems. So I just bring that up and kind of leave it open-ended for the city manager to interpret how he thinks is the best way of making that happen. But I'm wondering if there are other people that have that interest in seeing the city pursue that? If not, that's fine, but that's where I'm at right now.
I think you're talking about COTHA, which was before city manager Kishnik. And I believe that that went away because of lack of interest from homeowner associations. But I think if somebody could try to bring that back to life, we discussed this, I think, a little while ago, that there are still homeowner associations out there, but there are not as many as there used to be. But I think it's certainly worth seeing if there's some potential for resurrection because it was a great way to communicate with homeowner associations. And it was a very good way for staff to interact with all of the homeowner associations. So I guess I would ask if the city manager Kishnik could give us a report back and give us maybe an update whether that's possible or if there isn't any interest in that anymore from the community. But I agree with Councilman Teetz. It was a great way to communicate amongst all groups within the city. Councilman Fleming?
Yes, Mayor. If I'm not mistaken, I believe there's a Christmas tree lighting coming up this week, isn't it? Santa Claus is coming to Troy. I believe that's Wednesday?
I believe seven o'clock Wednesday evening, Santa's going to come right at the steps of the Veterans Memorial.
Invite everybody.
Everyone's invited. Hot chocolate. Any other council comments? City manager Kishnik, is that possible to get a memo to us to...
Yes, in fact, I already, the Santa Claus coming to town? Or the COTHA?
I think we're all pretty clear about Santa.
Okay. My kids have confusion on Santa some days. But the COTHA, I talked to Cindy Stewart today, who was the city liaison, and she's preparing a memo of sort of what the history was, where it stands, and how we can move forward as Councilmember Teetz suggests. I did attend one homeowner's association annual meeting a couple of months ago and did a presentation, and it was very well received. And you remember the Troy Story Report of last week, maybe that was one area we wanted to maybe get all the president or as many presidents of different neighborhood associations together and present that in a very summation form and get feedback as well. So I know after talking to Cindy today, she'll be working on that with me.
Any other council comments? Any comments on the reports from the agenda packet? Next is comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. I don't see anyone signed up for that item this evening. There is no study item this evening, no closed session. So we are adjourned. Good evening.